Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So this is the night of traditions and celebrations. So we should do this every meeting, I think, Mr. Goze, you are correct. Next week has been designated School Board Recognition Week. And so we want to take the opportunity tonight to recognize the Board of Education. We just spent some time recognizing our employees who are an important part of the work that we do here. But also important is the work that happens around this table that makes the decisions, that provides the resources for all these amazing things to happen. So our governor has written a proclamation that I will share with you to celebrate this event, and it goes like this. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by the more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State; and whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society in an ever-changing world; and whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many, many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education; recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of the child; and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of school districts to the public and the public's expectations to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those in the future; and whereas the members of the New York State Local School Boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system, in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children; and whereas during October 21st through 25th, 2019, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, and it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now therefore, I, Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, so hereby proclaim October 21st through 25th, 2019, as School Board Recognition Week in the Empire State. So we have a tradition here in Gilderland. Some school board members get coffee mugs or pens, but we're all about learning here. So each year, our principals work with their school library media specialist to select just the right book for their school board liaison. And we present it at this evening, and inside the book has a seal, and we're going to ask the school board member to sign it. You can actually take the book for a little bit of time and enjoy it and read it and then bring it back, and then it will be placed on a shelf in that library and remain there for many, many years to come. So your impact will touch not only sort of philosophically, but actually viscerally in each one of our buildings. So I have asked all of our building principals to kindly come up to present their books to the respective board members.
Please be elephant and piggy. It's worth a shot, though. It's all right. Thank you very much.
I will, for sure. Thank you.
Golly, that guy's great. He did one called Castles. That was just the coolest thing ever.
So thank you all for all you do. This is not easy work, and it makes a tremendous difference. Every decision, every deliberation does change the path of our school district, so thank you for your good work. One other thing I would like to just say while we're recognizing board members, we had also hoped to recognize Christine Hayes this evening and thank her for her service as a Board of Education member for seven years. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to come tonight, but I do have her plaque, and Dr. Rivera has agreed to be our courier. So Christine, if you're watching, if you're watching, we thank you very much for your service and your leadership. So thank you so much, and thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the independent audit report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019.
Back to reality.
Yes.
Big time. So good evening. I am Michael Rossi from Weston Company, and each, for probably the last five years, we've done the external audit for the school district. As per the Five Point Plan, which came about 2006, I met with the Audit Committee, and as Ben may tell you, for a few hours, and we really went through this financial statement you have in front of you in a lot of detail. So the Audit Committee's asked me to come before the Board, give you a brief overview of what's in this financial statement, and it's the Audit Committee's job to make a recommendation to the Board for acceptance, at which time this goes to OSC, SED. We send it to the federal government, and it's posted on the website of the district. So with that, you each have a bound copy of the report in front of you. Page one and two are our independent auditor's report, and at the bottom of page one, we say, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly." That is an unmodified opinion. That is the highest opinion we have as a profession. Some people call this a clean opinion, but a clean opinion is slang. Unmodified is the technical term. After that, 20 years ago this year, GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, came out with standard number 34, which said school districts, towns, villages needed, state government needed to have an MDNA and full accrual financial statements included in their audit. So pages three through 11 are the management discussion and analysis. And what this is, is it's a snapshot. It's a chance for the reader to have an understanding of the district without looking at every single page in this document. After that, we have the full accrual statements, and they are on page 12 and 13. Now, at the bottom of page 12, there's a total net position, and it's a very large deficit. If we were to put all of our chips in, this is where our district would fall, minus $98 million. That is because we have recognized future health insurance, that's GASB 75, to the tune of $248 million. That is the amount that we have contractually obligated ourselves to as of today. So full accrual statements required to be in there. That is not allowed to be funded. We continue to be pay-as-you-go, and we are not allowed to operate as a school district on the full accrual basis of accounting. We operate on a modified accrual basis of accounting, which you will see on page 14. So when we come to do the audit, we audit the funds of the Gilderland School District, and we audit the account groups, which are fixed assets and long-term debt. So the first column, the general fund here, accounts for almost all of the activity that happens in the school district. And if you see the total asset, $17 million, and the total liabilities of $6.3 million, and the difference is fund balance. And I want you to know that all of the restricted fund balance we have that you see there are the restricted fund balances that are allowed by New York State. And if you look towards the bottom, it says unassigned fund balance, $4,842.97. That is exactly 4% of the next year's budget. So that is real property law 1318. The district has complied with that law and has $4.084 million in unassigned fund balance. The second column has no fund balance. That is our special aid fund. That accounts for the grants that happen here. The reason there is no fund balance is because we need to spend the money for Title I or 611, 619, in order to ask for reimbursement. Thus, the revenue and expenditure equal, and we have no fund balance. Third column, School Lunch Fund, that just operates breakfast and lunch for the children. Debt Service Fund, that collects money to be used for bonded debt, interest or principal. And then the Capital Fund, you see, has a small deficit fund balance of $327,000. This district primarily buys its buses in the Capital Fund and on bond anticipation notes. Those are not permanent financing, and thus, as we pay those bands off, we will have a positive fund balance or no fund balance if we hadn't bought any buses in that year. So that is basically why we have a minus fund balance there. We're also in the Capital Fund doing our Smart Schools Bond Act, and we haven't received some reimbursement from the state at this point. So overall, if you look, total fund balance in the funds, modified accrual, $12.3 million. A very big difference between that and the net position of a deficit of $98 million. But this is how we operate the school district. After that, we have several pages of notes to the financial statements. The notes are on page 19 to 46, and the notes just provide additional language, additional numbers, charts, things that we need to disclose, how we operate, and then all of the reserves, the restrictions on those. After that, we have supplementary information. The supplementary information, or required supplementary information, is required by GASB to be in the report, or OSC, or New York State. So we've complied with that, and we put it in their report. After that, we get to page 56 and 57. So as auditors, what we do is we attach opinions to management's financial statements. So on page 56 and 57, we have our second opinion. So the first opinion was about the numbers presenting fairly. This is an opinion because we're doing a yellow book audit. We're doing a governmental audit. We have to give an opinion on financial reporting. The internal control's over that. And here again, we've given an unmodified opinion. Management here does a tremendous job. They're not asking me to come in and make huge journal entries. They're not asking me to make management decisions. They have a good understanding of the books and records and present them to me clean. I have no major adjustments, if any adjustments ever. So this is a clean opinion on financial reporting. Then, on page 58 and 59, you have the third opinion from Weston Company. Now, anytime a government or a nonprofit spends more than $750,000 of federal monies, we have a compliance audit, a single audit. Here, Gilderland had about $2 million in federal funds that were spent, or collections for free and reduced lunches. And again, this is an unmodified opinion. There were no unallowable costs, nothing that rose to any significance in the federal grants. After that, we have the final audit, and that is on page 64. Because the Board of Education has oversight over the extra classroom activity funds, we have to do an audit. Here, this is cash basis. We do not audit when the activity happens, so we do have a qualification of the opinion that says, at the time of collection, we don't audit. We don't know if those numbers are accurate. We audit from when the money goes in the bank, and we audit from when the check is written. And again, the extra classroom activity fund is in good shape here. I mean, overall, the audit went very well. There's no major issues that we found. I'd like to thank the business office for all the hard work they do. Neil and John and their staff provide us everything very timely. So if there's any questions or anything the Audit Committee would like to ask, or board members, I know Rebecca, it's your first meeting, you want to ask anything?
No.
But, you know, I'm available anytime. As Ben and Tim may tell you, I like to speak about this, and we have lengthy discussions. So if you'd like me to come back, I will, or if anybody wants to submit a question through, you know, Neil or John, anybody can get ahold of me.
Barb? I just have a general question. You said we had $248 million that we have set aside on health insurance premiums?
Mm-hmm.
Does that give you pause for the future?
For myself?
For the taxpayer? And is it a sustainable system? I mean...
It's not sustainable. But at some point, there's going to have to be, something's going to happen. So we're going to have an election next November. That'll change the dynamics of this number. A Medicaid-for-all system would change this number. Future contracts, I know it's hard to change something that everybody has, but even a change in co-pays would drop that number. But what the real issue is going to be is, as people live longer, you're going to have more retirees than you have employees receiving benefits.
Right.
So that is why it's not sustainable. But at this point, we continue to be pay-as-you-go. Each year, we build a budget, we put the retiree health insurance in there, and we go forward. But if you looked at your, you know, your budget, you will see that health insurance is a huge line, same as retirements. So sustainable, something's going to change down the road.
Other questions?
I'd just say thank you to Neil and John. This is amazing, many years of good reports, and I thank you, Neil. I think you're more than lucky. I think we're very fortunate to have those people, and I appreciate it. I'm glad you're here.
It's very nice to come to this district. We do a lot of districts, and they're very, very well here, very good.
And so if we have other questions for Mike, we can go through Neil or contact you directly?
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions tonight? I forgot, Mike, can we keep this?
Yes, that's your bound copy. There's also going to be a posting on the website, and the PDF copy's going to OSC, SED, and the federal government, so.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks.
Okay. We still don't have a high school rep. Next, I need a motion to approve the consent items. These are the minutes for September 17th, 2019, the minutes of the October 2nd, 2019 meeting, CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, financials, that go from 1 to 4. Barb, you have a second? Tim? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 8-0. Next, for information items, curriculum instruction. Damian?
Thank you. I actually feel bad for sharing this first item. Fun evening tonight, but as described in the September 2nd edition of the New York State School Board's publication onboard, 2019/20 is becoming the year of ransomware attacks on schools. Fortunately, Gilderland has maintained robust cybersecurity systems which have effectively prevented such attacks from permeating our network and our data systems. We are, however, keenly aware that recent attacks on New York's school systems have become even more aggressive, sophisticated, and increasingly difficult to prevent and detect. The ROIC virus serves as a most recent malware which attacked 10 districts in New York State in recent months. Some districts were unable to open the school year as hackers had taken full control of databases and even their backups. In all cases, hackers demanded payment before releasing systems and data back to the school districts. Such malicious attacks have also impacted municipalities in New York and across the country, and you may be aware of the ransomware attack that hit the city of Albany as well as the city of Baltimore, where hundreds of thousands of dollars were paid to ensure that critical systems could be maintained and/or restored. Although our internal cybersecurity systems have effectively stopped such attacks, it is critical that we understand and prepare for new and ever-evolving types of attacks. We must be diligent about monitoring all inbound and outbound data traffic, which requires the use of current and adaptable cybersecurity systems. Considering the recent wave of attacks on school systems, we are evaluating all of our systems and considering additional malware protection to ensure that we remain fully protected against such attacks. Additional cybersecurity tools will likely be needed if we are to achieve cybersecurity standards and thwart these types of attacks in the future. Products such as Umbrella and advanced malware protection are being reviewed and tested. Additionally, Cisco's Identity Service Engine, known as ICE, will be needed for internal protection. All such systems come with additional costs, of course, which will likely require funding in the months and years ahead. Unfortunately, such systems are critical for maintaining data integrity and privacy of student data, as well as all district operations. The cybersecurity firm, Emisov, said there is no reason to believe that these attacks will become less frequent in the near future. Furthermore, organizations have a very simple choice to make, prepare now or pay later. So I bring this to the Board's attention because this is a very hot topic of conversation across the state right now amongst school districts, and it's one that we are very much involved with. And as we go forward, I can tell you that we are going to be seeking some additional funding for some additional malware protection for our district. We do not want to be in a position like the city of Albany where they had to pay out $300,000 to get their data back. So I just bring it to you for your point of awareness, and I also attached the article from the onboard publication for your reference. So stay tuned on that. And my second item, somewhat related to the first update on ransomware and cybersecurity, school systems are required to provide additional and new trainings in a wide variety of topics. These range from data privacy and cybersecurity to sexual harassment, incident management, school safety, right-to-know, et cetera. Our capacity to continue to provide face-to-face training in all required areas has been exceeded by the list of mandated topics and curtailed by limited time to do so. As such, we've been looking at new approaches, which are necessary if we are to remain in compliance with the ever-growing list of mandated trainings. In recent weeks, we have been configuring a new online training system that will address these challenges while enabling the district to remain in full compliance. The system called Safe Schools Online Training is made available to the district through its insurance coverage with Utica National. There is no additional cost to the district, so that's one good thing, and we have introduced the Safe Schools Training System for our employees for the mandated sexual harassment training in New York State. There are over 160 online courses that are available for our use, and we anticipate using more of them in the future. And lastly, a good news item. I want to extend congratulations to library and media specialists, Maura Nichols, Lisa Lehman, and Alicia Malanga, who's actually an enrichment teacher, for their award of a School Library Innovation Grant. As winners, our Farnsworth Middle School Library will receive a cart filled with resources needed to help implement design thinking, creative thinking, problem-solving, and team-building. This cart will be customized and loaded with Makerspace resources. Additionally, a full day of professional development will be provided, and the value of this grant is over $3,500. The innovation cart will include robotics and coding equipment, specifically two Ozobots, two Dash robots, four Meeperbots, circuitry equipment, two Snap Circuits 300, one Little Bit Steam student set, and a series of related projects. And lastly, not lastly, but design and build kits, two Connects Maker Kits, one Strawby School Kit, two Make Dual Tool Sets, four Strictly Bricks 1008 piece sets, and with all of this equipment comes an implementation binder filled with lesson plans. So congratulations to Maura, Lisa, and Alicia.
Thank you, Damian. Does anyone have questions for any of those? Barb?
Just had a quickie. Do we have insurance if we...
We do. We actually reviewed our insurance policy a few weeks ago, and we are adequately insured. That's the good news. I was at a meeting at BOSI's recently, and that was one of the first recommendations, was for schools to go back and immediately review their policies. We are well insured. I think we are at the recommended level of insurance for our district. So from that perspective, we are in good shape, but of course, we don't want to be in a position of not being able to open our schools or not being able to secure our student data and our information, which of course is confidential and protected by law. It's a big topic right now.
Damian, right now, they don't have, like, we have to have the dual, like, certification before you can log in, like, to a computer?
The dual verification.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have that on everything right now, but it's definitely something that we're going to consider going forward.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Damian. Next, school business. Neil?
First item this evening is the timetable for staff involvement, board consideration, public information, and vote on the 2020-21 budget. You have a whole calendar in your materials. I'll highlight a few of the dates. At our next board meeting on October 29th, that'll be an opportunity for the public to come in and share their thoughts on the upcoming budget. On December 10th, the Board will have that same opportunity to provide their input. On March 3rd, the superintendent will release the draft budget for the coming school year. On April 2nd, the Board will have a budget workshop session. On April 7th, the Board will adopt the budget, and on May 19th, we will have the budget vote and school board elections. My next item is an enrollment update. On the first Wednesday of each October, school districts across the state collect a variety of basic educational data to share with the state education department. Among these data are totals of students who are currently enrolled in each of our buildings. This year, there are 4,856 students enrolled in our K-12 programs, 49 more students than last year, and 35 students lower than projected during the budget development process. By level, the changes over last year's enrollment are as follows. Elementary is up 40 students. The middle school is down 11 students, and the high school is up 20 students. The district also has fiscal educational responsibility for students who reside in our school district but are not actually enrolled in the school district. These students are in a variety of programs, including BOSI's programs, private placements, alternative placements, such as Tech Valley and Alternative Ed, and charter schools. And there are 79 such students, a decrease of six students over the prior year. And then finally, housed within our school buildings are another 79 students from other school districts attending BOSI's classes at Pine Bush, Wesmir, Farnsworth Middle School, and Gilderland High School. These students are not included in the counts I mentioned previously. A total of 11 district classrooms are rented to service these students.
Any questions for Neil? Thank you. Next, Superintendent Information, Dr. Wiles?
Okay, my first item is just a brief update on our School Start Time Task Force. It was a year ago today, or this time, that the district established our School Start Time Task Force comprised of parents, students, teachers, administrators, school board, and community members. This summer, the district engaged School Bus Consulting, a transportation consulting firm, to study the implications of school start time changes on transportation operations. In our work over the last year, there are many challenges associated with this, but transportation is our big one to kind of unravel at this point. So SBC was here on October 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and they spent some time meeting with our district's leadership team, Transportation Department representatives, and also with our School Start Time Task Force. They are putting together a report that would include the information they gathered from their meeting with us, plus a ton of data the Transportation Department gave them around routing, et cetera. We are anticipating their report at the end of this month. We learned today that a scheduled meeting they're not going to be able to make at the end of the month, on the 28th, so we're going to conference call tomorrow and try to get that rescheduled as soon as we can in early November. The next big part of this work, once we have those options, is really to engage our community in the discussion. One of the things that the consultants said in his work around the country with school districts who are exploring or have explored and made the change to a later start time is that the most successful implementation was accompanied by a lot of community engagement, giving people a chance to weigh in on the various options. So our committee will be working on that. And Aubrey Campbell right now is working on taking our information and moving it kind of front and center on our website so people can access the PowerPoint presentations that we had last December, some of the materials we shared with the task force, and other resources as they become available. So we are moving, but right now, we're in the, we're waiting for this report mode so we can dig our, roll up our sleeves, I'll use that metaphor, and move on to the next step. And thank you, Barbara, for your many articles on the activities around the country. California just passed a law requiring later start times for 2022. So, interesting. I'll just say a couple words about my second item here. Each year, the Council of School Superintendents sponsors two conferences, one in the fall and one in March. And this particular conference in the fall, which was September 22nd and 23rd, is one of the best I've ever been to. I've been going to these for a long time, 20-plus years, and I heard, I think, the most inspiring keynote speaker of my career at this conference. most inspiring keynote speaker of my career at this conference. And I just wanted to share his name and his book and his thinking. The speaker was Father Gregory Boyle, and he's the founder of Homeboy Industries, which is out of Los Angeles, California, and they are a gang intervention rehabilitation program. And he, his message was about having compassion for people who have kind of lost their way, in this case, in an extreme way. And it resonated for me as we think about our work, when we talk about all kids. And, you know, we have, maybe not gang members, but we have kids who are struggling, and what can we learn from this as we try to connect with those children and bring them back in and get them engaged in learning and getting connected with the potential of their future? So he, his book is called Tattoos on the Heart. I bought it, haven't read it yet, it's on my list. But he really talks about the, his words, the power of boundless compassion. And he creates jobs for people. They created a bakery, they created all kinds of tasks for people to do to give meaning. And he said it was so profound to see rival gang members working together in the bakery to make, you know, bread that people come from all over to buy. Very transformative. So you could hear a pin drop, it was 600 superintendents in the room, which, hearing a pin drop there is, that's saying something. No PowerPoint, no, he just talked. And, I mean, it was just tremendous. So I recommend the book, and he's got TED Talks, it's very worthwhile. The other, I went to a number of sessions, but I want to mention that I did go to another on increasing diversity in the teacher workforce. There was a presenter from Philadelphia who was partnering with the Lynn Severance of Syracuse City, where they are working very hard to have a faculty and staff that reflects the student body in Syracuse, which is 75% children of color, which is very different from here. Anyway, got some great ideas to think about there. And last was a presentation from the Center for News Literacy out of SUNY Stony Brook. And there was a presenter there who talked about the importance of helping children learn how to evaluate information. Really powerful, kind of scary, but I had a lovely conversation today with Chris Missouri, our own English teacher who's on sabbatical right now, who's also looking at this topic. And I just thought, all three resonated with so much of the work that we're doing right now. So I thought I'd share my learning. It was great. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next is board president information. First, we have a variety of policies to look over. If Barb or anybody on the policy committee wants to share anything or have us pay attention, anything in particular?
Just a first read for all you folks to take a look and give us feedback.
Okay, next is the NISBA Voting Delegate Guide. Ask Barb again, I know that she's going to be our representative, and I think most of the answers you got were, you received most of the answers from everybody for the voters, the voting.
Really?
You got some, so you want to go over some?
Well, there are a number of them that, I just wanted to ask them, get some more, a little more feedback. Let's see, on the issue number two, let me pull these things out, on the, the salt tax. There was very mixed response on that one. And that is that the School Board Association wants to support the full restoration of state and local tax deductibility. And if anyone has reasons for voting one way or the other, then I'd be glad to hear them. Otherwise, we'll listen to what the other delegates say and we'll make a determination. Nothing on that one? Okay. The other one is number six, which is the Independent Hearing Officer. Let me read that one to you, because this is the New York State School Boards Association supports legislation that would require the independent hearing officer in a 3028 hearing to accept the penalty sought by the district if there is a finding of guilt. And again, a real mixed bag on the part of those who didn't respond. And if there's any fiber in anybody's belly, I'd be glad to hear it. What you've undecided on that one? Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Marie, in a 3028 hearing, if the employee wins, what do they get?
Well, if the employee is found not guilty, they would just return, assuming they were out on leave, they would just come back to the classroom.
So what this is asking is if we don't want to fire, you know, does the hearing officer prescribe a penalty if we, if the district wins?
If the district prevails, as part of the process, they, the district will always say, we are seeking suspension, we are seeking termination, we are seeking whatever we are. And then the hearing officer decides which of the penalties is most appropriate, and it will take into consideration what the district is asking for, but it is far from guaranteed.
Okay, number 12. It was a mixed, well, they were, in fact, there were 60% yes on that one. And that was asking the state to increase the child's safety zone by adding additional criteria such as safety hazards, et cetera. And I suspect that was sort of a reflection of, over the years, what we've heard from parents about curbs in the road and blind curves and stuff. So there was a 60% vote on that one. Well, this is 12? Mm-hmm, 12. Albany submitted. Saying it correctly. A criteria that pertains to neighborhoods with high crime rates or deteriorating vacant buildings that create safety hazards. And I thought that, I don't know that I'm opposed to it, but it seems to me that that doesn't affect this school quite as much as it might others. Right. Neighborhoods with high crime and deteriorating. These are urban. Urban? Yeah, urban, urban schools, so I wasn't sure. Okay, on that one? That it would affect us as much as it might other places. Well, and depend how they add the additional criteria, what the criteria are. So it'll be interesting to see what comes up on the floor on that one. Okay, number 15, and I won't bore you with a whole bunch of these, but this one seeks to initiate legislation at the state and federal level that would provide for regulations to identify proper practices and enforce sanctions for improper practices related to the participation of parent advocates at committee on special ed meetings and hearings. And the feedback I got from some parents, you know, special ed parents, they sort of felt it was slanted in the wrong direction, that if there were going to be penalties for parents bringing false information or whatever, what happens if a school district, you know, either deliberately or inadvertently provides false information? They, they didn't think that we should be supporting that particular resolution. And again, we have a split vote, 40% yes, 40% no, 20 undecided. But I was hoping that some of you may have had some thoughts on that one in particular. I, I didn't send mine in, but I was not in favor of this one. You weren't either? Okay.
Well, what kind of sanctions would they enforce?
Well, it's vague.
Yeah.
You know?
To me, that's, that's a problem.
Right, right.
How do they define improper practices? Did they define?
Exactly, exactly.
Well, you know, it's worth remembering that NISBA is not doing anything except supporting legislation that would flesh out some of these terms. So I think the nature of these are that, they're vague, and, you know, me, I've opposed them for being vague before, but, I mean, in something like this, word for word, it might not be worth arguing about.
And then number 22. This was a resolution that was not accepted by NISBA, the Resolutions Committee, and it asks that the state would not require retired police officers to ask for a pension waiver, that they would be available to districts, you know, for use as security guards or directors of security, supervisors of security, without the effect on their pensions and without pension waivers. And those that responded on our board to that said yes, and NISBA says no, so, but only three people answered, so. I, looking through, I said yes. You said yeah, so we'll add that. So that looks like a yes for us then. Okay. Very good. Anybody else have a burning one? No, I, and I think these, I guess the first times I was on the set, this is just things that NISBA will support or not. It's not like these go into law or anything else. It is just encourage, NISBA would then encourage. Right. Representatives to move on these. Exactly. They want to know if we think it's what they should be doing. Right.
When is the, it's in November, right, Barb? No?
No. About two weeks from now. 23rd, 25th. That's next Wednesday, yeah. Next week, Barbara. I have a wedding in South Carolina in between, so.
I guess if other people want to share thoughts with you, Barb, they still have a little bit of time.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Touch base with you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Next, action items. First, school business. Neil?
Thank you, Sima. First item this evening is on the heels of Mike Rossi's presentation earlier this evening is a resolution for the Board of Education to accept the independent financial audit report prepared by Weston Company CPA's PCE for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, as recommended by the Audit Committee.
And I think we need a roll call vote, right, Linda, for this?
Yes.
Oh, so can I have a motion to have a roll call vote to accept the independent audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019? Judy, second. Tim? Any, yep?
Mrs. Butterfield, or Dr. Butterfield, excuse me. Mrs. Frederico?
Yes.
Mr. Goze?
Yes.
Mr. Haran?
Yes.
Mrs. Percy?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
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 Okay, passes eight zero. Thank you, Linda. Next, oh, retainer agreements, Neil?
Okay, before we move along, I just want to give credit to a few people based on the audit results of the audit report you just heard, but I'd like to recognize John Rizzo, who's here in the audience this evening, for his role in that, Linda Livingston, who serves in the business office as well, Nora Mahennes, Tammy McGill, Laura Ashdown, Diane Tananini, Kelly Zerikowski, and Sue Urbanski, and also some of the people that play smaller roles in the overall audit control, Donna Jrazinski, who's our internal claims auditor, and the central treasurers for the middle school and high school extra classroom activity counts, Karen Judge and Ann Barker. So again, we appreciate all the support and help that those individuals provide in getting the results that you heard earlier this evening.
And let's not forget Neil Sanders.
Moving right along. Retainer agreements, so it's a resolution to approve the agreements with the Honeywell Law Firm to represent the school district in collective bargaining negotiations with the Gilderland Teachers Association and with the Gilderland Employees Association.
Okay, can I have a motion for the Honeywell Law Firm agreement for GTA negotiations? Judy, second. Gloria? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Next?
Next item is to approve memorandums of agreement for federal IDEA flow-through funds with a number of providers, and those are Albany County Preschool, Center for the Disability Services, Crossroads Center for Children, Early Childhood Education Center, Hillcrest Educational Centers Incorporated, Northeast Parent and Child Society, Parsons Child and Family Program, and Springbrook, New York Incorporated.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the federal IDEA flow-through fund? Barb? Second, Gloria? Any questions or comments? Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Did we skip letter B?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we didn't include B in.
B, B, capital B and the lowercase b for GEA?
I put them both at the same.
Oh, I did? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear.
Go for every capital letter. Okay.
Next, general fund transfers.
Yes, as indicated in your materials, is the recommendation to approve budgetary transfers totaling $41,801 as described in your materials.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the general fund transfers? Gloria, second. Tim? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. And last, donations.
Yes, recommended that we accept the following donations, a monetary donation from the Pine Bush Elementary School PTA for the purchase of new playground equipment, and a monetary donation from Gilderland Softball Booster Club for the purchase of a hitting tunnel.
Can I have a motion to accept these donations? Ben, second. Kelly? Any questions or comments? Of course, thank you to these two organizations. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Next, superintendent action. Dr. Wiles?
I have four co-curricular clubs at the middle school level for your consideration, Board Games Club, Fingerboarding Club, Magic the Gathering Club, and Cup Stacking Club.
Can I have a motion to approve these co-curricular clubs? Ben, second. Rebecca? Any questions or comments?
It sounds like fun.
Definitely sounds like middle school.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. And next, board committee reports. We'll start with audit? Or do we not need to do audit?
You've voted on the work of our labor, all the financial reports and the actual audit.
And then we have a meeting scheduled for November 20th at 8:15 at Farnsworth, which will be a little different location for us.
Thank you. Next, communications?
Scheduled to meet Friday, so our first meeting at 8:15.
Is that the DO? Okay. And next, business practices?
It's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, 4:00 p.m.
Okay. And lastly, policy?
Tomorrow at 8:00 a.m.
Way to go, Barb.
Right in the alley, Barb.
It's the second meeting this week? Okay, do we have public comment number two? Nope. Board issues, ideas, and sharing. Does anybody have anything they want to share? Judy?
This is, this is just a comment. I bumped into one of our maintenance people, and he'd been here for many years, and I asked him how things were going, and he said things are really good. He appreciated working with Neil and Ellen, and I thought, nice, we'll pass on a compliment to them.
Ben?
So, looking at the policy committee's agenda tomorrow, you know, I was gonna bring this up then, but since we got the whole family together. Typically, the policy committee kind of goes in order and refreshes and keeps up to date on stuff. You know, and I noticed that there was a big jump in our policies. We go from like a 310, you know, 4,500 to, you know, the 6,000s. And we miss all the good meat in between there, which includes, you know, homework policies, attendance policies, discipline, code of conducts and stuff. And, you know, to give the committee some fun things to do, you know, I invite us all to think about, you know, what might be something worth. You know, every year, we have one big controversial policy that we, you know, toss around for six months, and the window for those six months is closing, people, so, you know, if you've got an issue, you know, particularly in that meaty section, please throw it our way.
I mean, do you have any particular ones? I know when I was on policy, for example, you are also, when we talked about the volunteer application like that, you know, had a lot of discussion, and you know, if any of these that you already started talking about that you can foresee there might be any? that you already started talking about that you can foresee, there might be any flags or?
Well, the code of conduct, NISBA released last year a restorative justice-esque language policy that was gonna have to go through different layers of administration, I'm not sure where we are with that. Marie mentioned it briefly in an email last week, I think. You know, homework is always a debatable issue, I think, I brought this up last year. Our policy for elementary schools is there's a minimum amount of time that kids should be doing homework, when most research seems to support a kind of maximum that's lower than our minimum. You know, so just, there's, these are the meaty policies that affect kids in school, so, you know, I was just concerned that we might miss them. So, you know, everything's nice and neat on the website these days, you can just scroll through and see if any catch your eye that maybe you think we should talk about.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, I forgot. Next week is the Long House at Linwood, and it's a wonderful event, if you can find time during the day to go and probably get your own, excuse me, tour guide of the exhibit, and it's just great. And the kids, when they're 12th graders, this is often the thing they remember most about elementary schools, so if you want to see some of the things that are best, try and get there at some point during the week.
So Rebecca, you could have, you may have seen the invitation to go see the Long House at Linwood, and I forgot, when we go to attend the school events, we notify the school principal or to you, Marie?
Well, I think with this kind of an event, it's an open invitation, so I think you can just go and it'll fit into your schedule.
Okay, thank you. Barb?
You just piqued my interest. We have the new volunteer policy, could we, at some point in the year, get feedback how effective it was, whether it reduced our volunteers, or, you know, if it provided an awful lot of problems for our front office, or whatever? Just an update.
I can give you a quick one right now.
Okay.
It went very smoothly. We have, some of our buildings have binders of volunteer forms, we're actually looking at a way to make it electronic, so we could make it a tab within e-school data, so we're not looking through binders to see if a parent has volunteered. We're also streamlining the process, so like a parent who wants to volunteer at two different levels would only have to fill out one form. So I think the feedback has been positive, I think parents understand that in this day and age, doing due diligence to make sure we have all the right people in the building has been well received, so.
I don't know, I don't remember what's written in the policy, but a question came my way earlier this year about an employee in the district who wants to volunteer for their child's classroom, let's say. So they're obviously vetted because they're an employee, I don't remember if there's language in the policy that says they don't need to fill out an application, a volunteer application.
It's not explicit, but.
Okay.
The question has come to me, and I've said, you've been fingerprinted, so you're good.
Probably doesn't happen too often. Okay, other issues, ideas? Oh, sorry, Gloria?
I got opportunity to attend a book, a discussion group, Damian has, and a group of teachers are meeting, discussing that book, Waking Up White. It was, it was an excellent, excellent opportunity to just listen to people reflect on the whole idea of racism and what it means. And there's three more meetings coming up, and so it was very, very moving. I appreciated the teachers welcoming me in so easily.
Did we get emails for the invite? I don't remember. To be.
I asked about it.
Oh, okay.
I had asked about the book or something, I heard about it.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't miss it.
And then I got hold of the book and I read it, and then I heard that.
You were here for the fire drill, that's.
I was here for the fire drill, and I got out of my car.
On the day of our meeting.
Damian said, "Oh, today they were meeting on that book." So I went.
We can send those dates around.
Yes, I think it'll be extremely helpful.
The next three meetings, the next one is actually Thursday of this week, at 3:30 at the middle school.
Yeah, that's when the Road Runner is.
Well, depending on the rain, that's, that's it.
We're hoping.
Maybe it's this Thursday.
Looking at Mr. Lester's face.
We're hoping it's Thursday. No rain.
They may have to do that meeting, Damian.
24th would be the next meeting, and then 25th.
Is that November 24th, Damian?
It's October, so it's basically the next three weeks.
Any other?
It's 3:30.
You send me the dates, Damian, I can put them in my Friday update.
I can do that, I can do that. I mean, the only thing I will say, not that I don't want you, but it's really kind of a vulnerable conversation for a lot of people in the room, so just, you know, come with that understanding, if you do want to jump in, that, you know, people.
It would be good to have read the book, too, or read.
Yeah, I think it's important to have read the book, but just with that understanding that for some people, you know, this is a difficult conversation and a difficult topic to be discussing openly with peers and colleagues, and then board members on top of it, so just have that awareness in your mind.
So it's teachers and administrators?
Teachers, administrators, we have a couple of teaching assistants there, it's a good mix.
Thank you. Any others? I'll just put out there again, I think I shared that safety forum that was happening in Saratoga, I don't really know too much about it, but that was kind of purposeful, because I don't, I just want to know what's being discussed, and so I think it's an open invitation.
You have to register.
You have to register, it's free, but I think I forwarded that to you all. And, no other? All right, so we need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the following matters, to discuss issues relating to tax surcharge claims, and to discuss the employment history of particular persons and matters leading to potential discipline or dismissal. Can I have a motion? Kelly, second, Barb? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Thank you.